Thank you.
And Chairman Catigan, if I may, there are a couple of additions and deletions, so why don't you get there?
Okay, well, how about if I move to open the meeting?
Yep.
Second.
Do we do that before you appoint him as a full member or after?
I already did that.
Oh.
So polling the members, Dave Funioli.
Yes.
Vicky Janicki.
Yes.
Darlene Sedano.
Yes.
And Albo, yes. Okay, so the meeting's open. We're supposed to start the hearing now, so I think we'll... Well, I guess we have to... What additions do you want to talk about, Beth?
There's a couple of them. I just added the minutes from September 21st for approval. I added two, a planning board referral for the zoning amendments being proposed. And a... There's two correspondences that came in today. And one is with regards to special town meeting. And the other is with regards to Three Wheeler Road, a special permit. And so those can come later in the... Yeah, okay.
All right, cool. So those are additions to the agenda, informally speaking. So does anybody have a copy of the notice right in front of them that can read it?
Vicky does.
Okay, we're ready to go. All right. "In accordance with MGL Chapter 48 and the Townsend Zoning Bylaw, the Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a virtual public hearing on Wednesday, November 2nd at the 2022 at 5:45 PM on the application of Joseph Z. Shank for a special permit under Zoning Bylaw Section 145-36 pursuant to Section 145-65. The applicant is proposing to construct an accessory apartment over an attached garage at 5 Madison Ave., MAP 31, Block 28, Lot 10, RV2 zoning district, public remote access via Zoom Link."
Okay, so is there a motion to open the hearing?
No, moved.
Second.
Polling the members, Dave Funioli.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
And Albo, yes. Okay, so we're open for business. Let's see here. I think I looked at this stuff. It is... This is not an existing accessory apartment. This is a whole new deal? Okay.
Maybe let's turn it over to Joe and let him tell us what he's doing.
Yep.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm sure everyone knows I've sold my home at Turner Road in Townsend, and I want to stay kinda as my home base in Townsend. So my son-in-law, Aaron, and my daughter Wendy and I have decided we'd like to build an in-law apartment off of the side of their house. And so that's why we're sitting here in front of you guys, so that I can keep Townsend for me and my wife still as our main residence.
All right. Let's see here.
So what's existing? So the home, the single-family home is existing? And you're... Are you adding a garage to add the apartment, or is the garage already there?
No, the garage is... If you see the set of plans that we have submitted, the garage is underneath the floor plan of the house, of the apartment.
Okay.
But does the garage exist now?
No, no, it does not.
So the garage is to be built, okay.
Yeah.
So is it... Was it an existing three-bedroom home, and now it'll be a four-bedroom?
Originally was three-bedroom. They did back probably four or five years ago. They added a bedroom on another side of the house. They went to the Board of Health, they upgraded their septic system. And so now they have a four-bedroom. We are planning to do the in-law apartment, so we've been in front of the Board of Health. I've had it engineered for the septic system. The town, Building... Board of Health has approved the addition to the septic for us to be able to add the extra bedroom on.
Oh, so you're gonna go to a five-bedroom, and you gotta upgrade the septic again?
Yes. That's the cost of having fun, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm looking at... I'm looking at the prints here, and I'm having a hard time. Well, one... This looks like a septic modification, huh?
So the accessory apartment is gonna be 790 square feet?
Yes, 795 or something like that, 790.
Do you know what the square footage of the home is before you add that?
I don't know, Aaron. I think it's like 20... 2200, Aaron, do you know?
Yeah, no, I think you're right.
It's 2200, I believe.
All right, so you didn't... Did you do the math on your application? I was looking for that as just a quick reference, but we can do the math.
Yeah, building inspector and I sat, and he said that, you know, that 800 square feet falls into the rules and regulations. I've already filed for a building permit, and he's already gone through it. And he just waiting for the ZBA.
I'm still looking at... Looking over this stuff, I'm sorry. So 2200 plus 800 would be 3,000? So what's...
We need exact numbers, though. I'm gonna... I'm gonna try to find these. I had them open. Just trying to toggle back and forth between all the files takes a minute.
It's okay. It's in the application folder there, the plans here.
The very end, yeah. All the architectural plans are there.
3,000 and the percentage... Is it a percentage still or not?
Yeah, it changed, though, so we've gotta go... We've only done a couple of accessory apartments under this... Under this amended bylaw, so we've really gotta go through it.
It should be the lesser of 800 square feet or 35% of the floor area of the principal residence and the apartment combined. So if we go...
I'm looking for the footprint of the building. I'm not seeing...
Yeah.
What percentage did you say?
35, she said.
35%.
35? It looks like it's 27% to me.
That's what I got. That's what I got, yeah.
It's close enough for government work. I mean, if it was like 34 and 1/2, then we'd have to go through a lot of calculations. But I think as long as you're below the... The maximum now is 800. So you're slightly below that, and 800 as a percentage of the full 3,000 square feet would be 26, 27%. So that looks good. So the building inspector's dealing with the building permit, so he'll be looking at the means of egress and stuff like that.
Yep, we've already discussed that, and he's already approved that.
Yeah, okay. So Beth, we have the... Somewhere in this package is the... What do you call it?
The referral comments?
Oh, I'll get to that in a minute, but the applicable code and regulations, that's what I was looking for.
Okay. Special permits.
What's the lot size?
It's three acres.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. You made the three... You know, 3/4 of an acre is the minimum, so you're fine there.
Is that 30% of the new total square feet? So if you take the existing plus the addition?
That's correct. So it's 30... So the... It's 35% of the floor area of the principal residence and apartment combined.
Got you. That's great. Sorry, guys, somebody's trying to print in my office here. I'm gonna mute for a second.
So now I assume there's no setback issues, Joe?
No, none at all. If you see that plan that was submitted, I gave the septic plan, and it has the addition from the engineers plotted right on there. And you can see there's more than ample room for all setbacks.
Okay, great.
So I just did a quick calculation. If the current home, I got 923 square feet is the first floor. If this is a straight-out colonial, so the second floor is the same as the first, is that correct?
No, it's not.
What's the style of the home? Is it a cape, a gambrel, colonial? What is it?
Like a custom cape.
It's a cape, okay. So then it's less than that. Well, if it were the same, so your first floor is 923, if the second floor is 923, that's 1826. If I take 18... I mean, 1846, if I add 798 square feet, I get 2644. And that means that apartment is 30... A little over 30%.
There was an addition. Just... There was an addition done when they upgraded that septic system. So that... What size was that addition? So that's where...
Okay, I'm not seeing that on this... That's the second floor. That's a second-floor plan, but that's living room, bedroom. All right.
And then over...
I'd really like to know the real dimensions instead of guessing on this. We always do the math. Foundation plan. I don't see the addition on this foundation plan.
On which one are you looking at, Darlene? The original property?
I'm looking at the plans you submitted.
You want me to screen share them so you can all see the same thing?
So it says in-law... Is there a garage plan, a second-floor plan?
That's for the addition only.
Okay.
That's the addition. That's not the original house.
Okay, so you didn't submit any plans of the existing home? With the addition added on?
No.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna go to the assessor map in town, in the town of Townsend, and I will get the footprint.
Yeah, he did. It's here.
Do you have it? If you have it, that would be great.
I hope that's what you're looking at. If I could screen share, Hartley, please give me that capability, and I'll show you what I have. That might be helpful. I don't... Yeah.
I'm not seeing it in the list of stuff.
Dave, can you do it? Dave, can you screen share the application?
Beth, I just gave you the co-hosting ability.
Oh, okay. Okay, there we go. Does that help? That's... See, the new in-law is down here.
Well, it would help if it had some dimensions on it.
Yeah.
It just has dimensions for the in-law. Yeah.
Okay, so does anybody know, is the main foundation of your home before the addition, is it 26 by 35 and 1/2? Does that sound right?
The what? The main addition for the home that's...
The foundation, the foundation size of the home before the addition.
Now, Aaron, do you have the copy of the plans right there? You can give the footprint size.
I mean, I could do it real quick if you know your foundation size.
I'm trying to find that right now.
It should, Darlene. It should be right in the records of the town. The town records that say exactly the footprint of that house, how many square feet it is. Because the addition went on the... What you're looking at right there, Darlene, anything in the gray is... Anything in the gray is the addition. The white that you're seeing is part of the old house. We didn't put the whole house in here. We just did the basic.
Okay, so what I saw was a second-floor plan that had dimensions of 26 by 35 and 1/2.
That is on the... That is strictly... Any... That, what you're seeing right there is the dimensions of the addition only. The house that I built originally...
Well, if that's the dimensions of the addition, then your addition's 923 square feet.
No, because the building... No, the building inspector already stated that the stairway going up the egress to get into it is not living space, and that is...
That's not how we calculate. We do inside area. We don't minus bedrooms. We don't mind...
No, it says, it says living.
We do, as assessors and appraisers do.
Darlene, in the past, we've not counted things like stairways as part of the...
We do. I'm the one that always does the measurements. So we do the outside dimensions of the home. So I'm looking at a second-floor plan. Oh, okay, second-floor plan. Why is it 35?
Darlene!
So we would... I'm gonna tell you something. We would not be applying this like we've done to other people, and I have a problem with that.
How do you mean?
Well, we've always taken the dimensions of the home. Living area, stairways are included, bathrooms are...
That is not living, darling. I would beg to differ with you. That's not living. In your bylaw, it states living space. And the building inspector also confirmed that.
All right, I'm gonna... Let me do the talking for a minute, okay? And then I'll give you a chance to respond. I'm gonna tell you a couple of things. We've... In the past, we've done the foundation, we do the living space. It's exactly like the assessors tax you on it. It's how appraisers give valuations to homes. It's how even building inspectors look at how much square footage is being built. And as you all know, I am in the profession, so I know how living area is counted. We don't typically use below grade, anything above grade, and a footprint is considered living area above grade. And that is, I'm telling you, that for 25 years, that's... We've applied that that scenario to every single accessory apartment that we've done. So I don't... I don't feel comfortable changing the rules for a particular application.
All right, so what are the numbers that you want to use, Darlene?
Well, I like when it's provided for us, but if I have to do the digging, I will. The existing home has a foundation size. And there's a first floor and a second floor. Now, depending on the style of home, the first floor is easy. The second floor depends on the roof line. So you typically take the first floor, and if it's a cape without any dormers or whatever, it's usually 1 and 1/2 times. That would be the total square footage of the existing home. Then you take... So they made an addition, you'd have to add that to it. You take the total square footage of the existing home, add the proposed build, and that will be your new total of square feet. And then you can figure out if the apartment is the right percentage of the whole. That's what we've done. And that's what I'm trying to get to, but I don't have the numbers in front of me.
So what are the dimensions of the apartment now? 35 by 36?
No.
Well, that's what I was looking at.
I can't read them on my computer.
I know. I'm having a hard time with this here.
Well, I submitted everything in paperwork to you guys, so I mean, I don't know what else.
So these in-law plans... So here's the thing. If the in-law plans are... I'm looking at the outside dimension of 35.6, 35 feet 6 inches is the length, the width is 26 feet. How you get 798 square feet is not... So they've cut out stairways and stuff. I get that now. So to me, your apartment is 923 square feet. That's what that is.
Okay.
That's what the apartment is.
So now how... So you don't like the 2,000 square foot figure for the existing house?
Well, I don't know what the existing house is. We haven't been supplied that information.
I believe, I believe it's 20 by 48, the foundation, darling.
I know, well... I appreciate you believing, but I want to hear factual.
Darlene, I have a question for you.
Yes.
How accurate is Zillow listing?
No, don't do that. Zillow's as good as what somebody enters into it. What I do when I'm trying to... So this is a field card on this house, if it's accurate. Like if it has the new addition, that's why I said it. The original bill will be there. Someone's on the phone. Can you mute yourself, please?
Please mute yourself.
Okay.
Whoever's talking on the phone, please mute yourself.
They can't hear you because they're on the phone. Let me do this real...
Hartley, can you mute? Maybe Hartley can mute them.
I'm gonna go to the town of Townsend website.
I'll try, hold on.
Thank you.
See, we have a new building inspector, too, that hasn't done a lot of these.
Right.
He's allowing this to happen. I have a problem with that.
So Darlene, using your numbers, Joe just said 3471 for the foundation, square foot.
Where are you getting the numbers from? They haven't been provided in... Like, they're not...
They might be on the print, but it's hard to read the print.
Right.
But if you use that number and you add the 923, that's 20... The same as I had before, 26.6%.
If they did the same scenario for the main house, it should be all right, but we need to know what the number is. What number, Madison, is this?
5 Madison Ave.
Five, okay.
You should be able to pull that right up on the town website, Darlene.
I'm working on it. It is a cape. Okay, here we go. All right. We've... Okay, there's... It's an L. Let me do some math here.
So Darlene, just when you're looking at that now, when you look at the front of that house, on the right side of that house, that's where the addition was built above the extra bedroom. So that is all squared right off now on the right-hand side of that house.
Great. This is not two measurements to multiply with here, so hang on. I get 28... 35.
So Joe, you said you sat down with Eric, and he came up with the 795 square foot?
Yeah, what I did is I went to Eric, I sat with him, I showed him the plan. He pulled out the original house plans on the property with the addition. He did the calculation, and he said that what I submitted was absolutely perfect to be able to build.
But what you're telling me is he allowed you to subtract stairways, so the numbers are...
He does not count. He does not. He said you have to have by law egress and egress from a home. Stairways don't count. That's exactly what he told me.
We're gonna have to talk to him because are we gonna be arbitrary with this? Are we gonna change the way we do it? Or we need to talk to the building inspector so we're on the same page here, so to speak?
Well, Darlene, my recollection is that we didn't count stairways in the areas of the... In the living area of the home on these accessory apartments, so I'm not...
I would have a hard time letting you get away with that because it just goes against all... It goes against the grain of the industry and how it's calculated. It doesn't work.
Does what I have on screen mesh with the floor plan you're looking for?
Yes. And it's an L shape, so you gotta divvy up, and you gotta do some measurements there. It's a little bit of work to do that. There's a lot of numbers there. Sorry, guys. I mean, I know it sounds like I'm being a pain in your ass, but this is the way I've been doing this for two decades, and that's how we've always done it. And if you guys have ever done it differently, when I haven't been a part of a meeting, that I don't know that, but I would never... I would never... I'll recuse myself. I will not do it like that because I would never have, and I won't do it.
All right, well, I think what we better do is we better continue this hearing and see if we can get with Eric and resolve this. Because if it's over 800 square feet, it's not... It doesn't meet the bylaw.
Right.
And Darlene, we need all four votes to get it. So if Darlene's not playing, then we're SOL for tonight.
Let me... Can I explain? I know this is... Let me explain to you. We try really, really hard to be the same to every applicant that comes across our meeting table. We want to... We don't want to treat one person differently than somebody else. And that sets precedent, and you get down... You get in a lot of trouble by going, "Oh, well, you did it that way for this person, but not for this person." And I'm sorry, but we've got a new building inspector, and I don't agree with the way he's doing it. So I think your percentage is right, but I don't know what to say. I think we need to talk to him and find out. Our bylaw doesn't tell us how to calculate those numbers, but we've always used the industry standard of how we get there. So whatever Bill's remembering, I gotta say, maybe I wasn't at the meeting, and somebody came up with a new idea, and I'm sorry about that. So...
Chairman Catigan, what information do you need from the applicant?
No, I mean, we need to resolve this. I'm sorry that we don't have Dave Chanel because he's got a pretty good memory for this stuff, too, so... I think what we're gonna have to do is continue to... We have a meeting on November 30th or something?
That's correct, but what specific information are you asking for before you continue?
The definition of living space.
Okay.
If we're gonna change it and everybody agrees on it, that's different. But I'll tell you, let me ask you a question, Joe. When you listed your home for sale and the square footage was put on the listing, did you minus out stairways?
I don't... There was nothing on there with stairways that I knew of. I didn't see them measure the stairways. They measured every room.
Living area is a standard number, and the tax record taxes you on your living area. And if you were to have your house appraised, they would be using your stairway. You're getting taxed on your stairway. Your value has stairway. You have lumber in your stairway. You may not sleep on your stairs, but it's still finished heated space, and it counts, so...
So if that existent property right now is 20 by 48, right? And that's what's the plan, 20 by 48, take that calculation and still within 30% or whatever it is.
What are you saying is 20 by 48? What part?
The main house that is the plans of the main home that is with the town of Townsend. The regular blueprint that that house was built. When I built that house, okay? The house is 48 feet long, and it is... Hang on.
But you have a garage... It's an L shape. You have a garage cut into it, and a garage is not... But you have a garage. It's an L shape. You have a garage cut into it and a garage is not.
Twenty feet wide with that that room, bonus room sticking out of it. So you add that also and that bonus room is twelve feet by twenty-two feet above the main foundation. So the main foundation, which is on record with the town, is is the twenty by forty-eight with the garage L sticking out, which is a great room over it, which that room okay, is twenty-two feet by fourteen feet. So if you add those calculations up, you're still within the thirty percent, correct?
Hang on.
I don't have.
The first the first uh the first floor is there is nine hundred and sixty square foot. And then what was the you just gave some more dimensions?
The first and then it is the great room, which is bigger than that twenty by the forty-eight. The great room is twenty-two feet by fourteen feet. That's that L sticking out.
That's another three hundred and eight square feet.
I think it's gonna end up being moot because the accessory apartment can't be over eight hundred square feet until we figure that out.
Right.
So.
I I agree. I think that the I I'm.
Basis, it's fine.
Yeah, well, for it's it's to be the lesser either eight hundred feet or thirty-five percent of the floor area. So if he's saying it's eight hundred feet, um is there a problem with that calculation, Darlene? Is that what's bothering you?
Um it's if I mean, the the percentage is probably gonna come out because if you minus stairways on the addition, you minus stairways from the from all of it. You know, you're you're I mean, it might be slightly different, but it's not gonna change the percentage of the whole to where it doesn't work.
So Darlene, you're saying that the stairways get counted and on on the the floor that they come from as well as the floor that they go to. So they get counted twice, basically?
No, your stairway is only on one level.
No, it's not. It goes from one to the other. I mean, there's a big hole where the stairway goes. So I I I just don't follow this reasoning.
Not significant. It's insignificant because you're taking your your footprint. So if you have a twenty-four by thirty-six home.
We've never done it that way with the footprint only.
Yeah, we have. Let's go back through some other decisions. I'm telling you, I would.
All right, well, we're gonna.
I would call you guys crazy.
Listen, I hear where you're coming from and we're not gonna get anywhere tonight. So is there a motion to continue to November thirtieth?
Mr. Chair, before we do that, what what measurement does Darlene need to see?
Um, we need to get the uh resolve the the uh living space calculation of the of the uh accessory apartment.
So I'm I'm a little confused. So if the building inspector is in charge of building and enforcing the building laws, if he says that he does not count stairways on an addition as living space and he he that's what he told me, that you have to have by law egress and egress out of a building, have to. And he does not consider that stairway as part of living. And he 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 showed me right in the thing, it says living space.
Yeah. Well, I I understand where he's coming from and and I understand where Darlene's coming from, but uh we're between a rock and a hard place, Joe. I'm sorry.
Well, and um to answer your question, the building inspector and the zoning board don't always agree. That's why people appeal his decisions to us. That's one of the remedies for uh not agreeing with the building inspector. So and he's and he's fairly new. So we, you know, sometimes we need to get on the same page and go, what are we looking at? Are we looking at it the same color? What what are we doing here? So the town, the town of Townsend is saying your total living area is two hundred and four, two thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet. I don't know how they get that number. I don't know if that includes your addition. So the footprint that Beth showed us, that plan, um that's perfectly fine as long as I can. I gotta do the math and do the calculations. That's all. And if it has your addition on it, that's great. And we already know what your um what your apartment is, but that's gonna lead us to another problem. You've created an apartment that's nine hundred square feet and you're calling it seven ninety-eight. So we need to resolve how we look at this or we're not getting anywhere. Do may do we need to talk to town council? I mean.
No, I don't think so. I think we'll talk to Eric and find out what his uh what his uh sources are for his determination and
That'd be great.
And we'll look look at and you better come up with some real estate sources that say that stairways are always counted and assessing and all that stuff. And then we'll we'll take a look at it.
I've never heard of deducting a stairway, ever. I mean, geez.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
Ever.
It's coming up out of the garage. It isn't like part of the house, like a first floor to your second floor. This is coming out of a garage, right? I understand where you're coming from, darling. Your first floor, your main living, you gotta get up to your second story.
You know what? Joe, I like that. I like that you just said that and provided that information because if that stairway is coming from the garage, well, that's that just might be, that's right. It's not living area. It's part of the garage.
It's part of the garage.
But if you have a stairway that's going from your living room, this just as an example, so from your living room to the second floor to get to bedrooms in your house, that's living area.
That's it. But this is coming from a garage. That's what Eric said.
Cool.
Yeah, I I still would be interested in understanding how there was seven ninety-five versus I took the stairs out and I still came up with eight hundred nineteen square feet.
Yeah, so I think this is a little convoluted and, you know, usually we don't do the math for you. It's provided for us. We like to see a footprint of the existing home plus whatever you're gonna add to it so we can just quickly do the math. And it's part of our uh that findings of fact. We have to say, oh, the existing home is the total. Yep, this is the percentage. And it's part of us making a motion. And and all we have is what the building inspector said, and I believe. And that's not good enough for me. I need to see it. It needs to be part of the record, part of the plans. Because one of the things when we grant a special permit, we always say, and built according to plan. And.
Right. And the the stairs are coming from the garage. The garage is not living quarters.
What's the dimension of that stair stairway? Is it on the plan here somewhere?
Ah, yeah, it is. Hang on one minute. Let's just try to let me try. I don't. I'm actually.
I can pull it up. Yeah.
Vicky, you've already done the calculation?
Oh, I tried to do it quick. Uh, you know, where the stairs.
Did that. The engineer did that. That's why I paid a professional engineering firm to take and design that. So uh you hang on one minute here and I will try to see what the dimensions of that stairway is. You give me one minute.
Is this helpful? Is this what you're looking for on the screen?
Yeah, it's a it's like it's in the garage plan, but I can't read the dimensions.
Yeah.
Uh, the dimensions are, well, it looks like.
It's a fairly size. Well, it says two eight by six eight somewhere. Oh, that's the door.
That's the door. So it's three foot eleven. Three foot eleven, eleven by the depth of that.
Supposed to be provided. I don't know what that measurement is.
Three foot eleven.
It's almost like there's some missing measurements. So this is this is what I'm trying to um
Because it's, you know, even on the plan, it's like unfinished to the garage, unheated. So it's that three foot ten and a half by the length up to the landing.
That's great. If that stairway is in your gar- in the garage, I don't have a problem. That's so that's not part of it, but that's not what I was using. I was calculating the in and the plan that you provided. It's the next page. It says twenty-six by thirty-five point five.
So I'm looking at.
Okay.
But that's the overall completely.
Gotcha.
I'm gonna scale the uh the drawing here.
I understand why they were okay.
I need.
So if you take if you take that three foot ten, whatever that was, the length of that twenty-six, whatever that it's twenty-four or twenty-six, you take that out of the living because that's coming from the the garage.
I need to get that bigger.
Two foot six, uh two foot eight door there measures on my scale uh.
It says three foot ten and a half inches stud to stud.
Three point three point five. And
Is that?
Total total length of the staircase is uh on my scale is uh.
Not just the landing.
Point one, so.
That's the landing with it.
Divided by point three five.
Measurement of the side.
Two point one divided by point three five.
Because if you see.
Six times two foot eight.
The one that Beth provided has missing measurements. I can't. I can't. I'm not seeing it. I can't figure this out.
Does the bylaw say that the in-law apartment can't be over eight hundred square feet? Is that what we're trying to?
Yes, that's what we're trying to figure out.
So what was the other part of that? The other side, it said add up the square footage of the existing thing plus the addition divide, you know, multiplied by thirty percent or whatever. What's that for?
Um, that that's a um the calculation for the um the basically, it's the area of the accessory apartment divided by the area of the house plus the accessory department. So it looks to me like that staircase is about sixteen feet long from the from the door at the bottom to the last stair um indicator. Sixteen and a half I got. So if we if we then multiply that by um the three foot eleven, right, which is essentially four, right? So.
Yeah.
So what is that? Uh, three point eight seven five, something like that.
But if you look at that.
That gives you a that that says the area of the staircase is about sixty-four square foot. So if you take that number that Darlene got, just multiplying out the um.
Yeah. So is it? Am I looking at this correctly? Thirty-five feet, six inches is the total length and the total width is twenty-six.
Well, no, there's a there's a notch out of the bottom there. There's a notch out of the bottom.
Two feet is only a it's only a fourteen, only a fourteen by two.
Gotcha.
Right? And then if you look at that floor plan, everybody on the second floor plan, you see the stairs, the upstairs, the the main floor plan. Okay, let let me if right there, whoops. Yeah, now just slide it over. Slide it over.
Oh, sorry. I gotta zoom out just a little to do that.
So if you look at that, the the stairway itself is kinda, there's nothing there, nothing above it. If you look at that wall, the living room only goes to that. It's it's not over any of it.
Okay, so I've got a rectangle.
Is nothing. It's just coming from the cellar.
Yeah.
Okay, so so Joe, um the front of the house, so it had that it's set back in two feet by twenty-one and a half. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's forty-three square feet.
Can you scroll down?
What you got for the stairway?
That's not correct. It's two feet by fourteen.
Down Beth and back up to the um.
Garage?
No, no, the other way, the other way, the other way. That's it. The garage plan. That's what I wanted to look at.
Okay.
Because um so Joe, the the two foot set cut out there for the sixteen by seven garage door, that's that's does the the upstairs overhang that or or what?
No, that's just straight up. That's that's.
Straight up, okay. So that that two foot by what it by whatever you got, you got a um sixteen.
You see, that's twenty-two, that's twenty-four feet deep. Everywhere where you see where you're right there with that mark right there, from that wall, if you look at them with the stairs coming up. If you look at the floor plan now, there's no living quarters above those stairs. That is just strictly stairs coming out of the garage.
Yep, okay.
And that's the whole. So that's their um so three feet, eleven inches. So say four feet by
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four. Okay.
Right.
So.
Yeah, cuz if you.
That's seventy-two. Okay, so here's so here's how I see it. We take the nine twenty-three as the total box. We subtract forty-three and seventy-two. Nine twenty-three minus three minus seventy-two. Oh shit, you're eight oh eight. It's eight oh eight.
I moved the the one wall in six inches, whatever we gotta do.
And we did. We rounded up.
Just pile empty boxes in the corner, Joe.
We already gave you an inch and a half on the stairway.
I mean, I I.
Well, go by your measurements. So so at least that, you know, if we can get rid of eight inches, at least you've got the eight hundred. Now I just gotta figure out what your house is. And I I can't figure this out. I've there's a measurement that is missing. See this thing that Beth showed? So what I.
But that's the main house. That's the main.
I want to calculate this and this without the garage, but I don't have a depth. There's no number.
So hang on one minute. Let me see if I can. I'm gonna send this right now to Beth. This is the true blueprint of that house that I built and you'll get all your dimensions right off of that.
Perfect.
So Beth, did you receive that?
Uh, not yet. I'm waiting.
So I think the it it is not really useful because it's all about whether this is eight hundred square feet or not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I think I think I think we should continue. And Joe, I think you should get get with your um engineer and um and see what you can do because um we're slightly over the eight hundred square feet. And the old bylaw, it wouldn't have mattered. The new bylaw, they put that maximum of eight hundred square feet in it, so.
Or thirty percent, right? Which is greater.
But you know.
It's the lesser.
Percentage basis, you're you're at twenty-seven, so you're not even close to the to the thirty-five percent.
But it's the it's the lesser of eight hundred or thirty-five.
The the new maximum is eight hundred square feet, so.
Okay, so I I mean, I I would love to try to move forward if I just say I will submit a plan with this eight inches cut off of this house to the building inspector. You can put right on the permit that I'll have my engineer redo it so that it's under that, that you feel comfortable. And if he doesn't, if I don't produce that plan shortened down by eight inches, then you don't issue the permit. You put that right on your special permit. I have my architect just redesign it, cut it back, whichever side, it'll be easier for him. And, you know, I mean, everything I've ever done in town and all my building, whatever I said I've done, I've done. And instead of continuing this, because I like to try to get the building started here as soon as possible. And I know I'm dealing with the conservation, but I mean, I'll we're talking six, seven inches, maybe? If that's what I gotta cut down on the building, that's what I'll do.
Eight inches.
Eight inches. I'll I'll take eight inches off the back of the building. Eight inches, I'll, I'll take eight inches off the back of the building.
Okay.
Well, you better ask mom if she minds having a smaller closet.
Uh-oh. Not, not the mom.
So, I mean, I, I'm willing, if, I know I'd really appreciate it if, you know, I tell you that, and we fall within that, I will have my engineer, I'll call him tomorrow, my architect, say, hey, draw me another set of plans showing that building just the eight inches shorter. So instead of the twenty-six feet with that two-foot bump out, it'll be twenty-five feet, four inches. And I'll submit that to the building inspector, so those will be the plans that we will build by.
Okay.
Can you live with that, Darlene?
And everybody else?
And can we put, yeah, we're able to put those conditions on, right?
If you're gonna be technical, the stairway's three feet, ten and a half inches, and we used forty, we used four feet, so.
So you were overestimating.
Do it right, you know? If it's, if it's technically, if it's seriously gonna be under eight hundred and you, somebody wants to make a motion with su- subject to plans being submitted that show that, I don't really have a problem with that. But I still haven't have, don't have the dimensions of the main house so that we know what the, what to know.
Well, I just sent them, I just sent them to Beth. She had them on the screen.
Yeah.
Of the original home.
Um, okay.
With the addition, yeah.
Not with the addition, she's asking for the original plan of the home.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Beth, Beth had them there for many.
You wanna email it to us? Is that easier or?
Sure, I can, I can put them on the screen again. Would you like them on the screen?
I can't see on the screen because I can't enlarge it.
Okay, let me email them to you then. One moment.
But I like to do whatever we can do. I wanna make sure we do it right. So, you know, I've always been that way, it's gotta be right, but in order, I, I'd rather not continue, I'd rather have my architect redraw it. You can put that contingency that the building inspector sees, that it's under that eight hundred square feet, and move forward. I, I have no issue doing that.
Well, and the architect could also do the, um, the original house calculation, so we get the percentage uh, more accurately than so far, but, but, you know, when we're so far under the, uh, maximum on the percentage part, I'm not too worried about that.
Excellent.
Thanks, Beth. Uh, so we also need to go through the other parts of the accessories that there, you know, we just need to walk through it, make sure we've considered each of the A, B, C, D options.
And Chairman Catigan, if I may, um, we also need to read the mandatory for all comments, please, for the record.
Yeah.
I. This is a JPG with flight.
Oh.
That's funny. Okay.
Okay, so the house is forty-eight feet long. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes.
Darlene, we're gonna have, we're gonna have his architect prepare the, an exhibit that will demonstrate the, the, um, square footage issue to comply with the bylaw. And that way, we don't have to through a lot of aggravation here.
All right. Sounds good to me.
Every dimension is on that plan that you'll need to get the square footage.
All right, so have, have you, um, Joe, have you got a report from the Board of Health on this at this point, or?
Yes, you should have that in your file. I sent that to Beth. They approved it, and I sent her the permit, so she has that.
Okay, I'm, it's not part of the app, or it's not part of the code, that's the problem. All right, I'll go back. All right. I'm gonna go through the referrals at this point. Uh, Building Commissioner. Uh, no comment, typical in-law apartment application. Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen trusts the determination of the ZBA after the public hearing and trusts the project will comply with all other rules, look, laws, ordinances, and any other requirements. Conservation Commission, awaiting notice of intent. Oh, you're gonna have to file, have you filed your NOI yet?
They, the engineers are working on that, yes, with the, with, uh, conservation.
Okay. Board of Health. This is not in compliance currently. Oh, this is the report.
Yeah.
See attached, okay, let me, let me see attached here. Uh, this is from Rick Metcalf, okay. The sewage disposal system currently serving the property of five Madison Avenue is, is only designed for four bedrooms. Proposed accessory apartment will cause the dwelling to have five bedrooms. As a result, the applicant submitted proposed septic plan by Ross Associates on ten five twenty-two to accommodate for a five-bedroom system capacity. Plans reviewed, and before the Board of Health can considerations of permit, the Board of Health was being receipt of a passing Title V inspection report for the existing system, and completed and signed interdepartmental referral form, whatever that means. Is that the building inspector form or what? My understanding is the applicant is working to obtain the service of a licensed Title V inspector and in the process of collecting signature for the interdepartmental referring, referral form. This could go in front of the Board of Health for their approval as soon as ten twenty-five twenty-two. Which, did that, 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 did that happen, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an update, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an update in your file. It says Board of Health update.
Okay.
From Rick Metcalf.
All right.
Did you see that?
Planning Board, uh, is in favor of the proposal as agreed on their, on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. And that's it. So there's an update you say on, uh?
Yeah, it's in the folder, uh, in the same area there, and, and the file says Madison Ave, um.
Comment update?
Yeah, comment update, yep, perfect.
Health comment update.
Yep, thank you.
All required documents were submitted, Board of Health issued a septic permit, okay. System still needs to be expanded, but everything is in place to do so, and I am okay with their proposal from Rick. Okay, cool.
And, and he also submitted the Title V approval certificate. That's in their file as well.
Oh, where, where's that?
That would be under Madison Ave Title V approval.
I see it, I see it. Oh, there it is. Oh, that's the permit.
So the, the.
Oh, sorry.
The existing home is two thousand four hundred forty-five square feet. That's what the total is. That plan that you gave us, Joe, actually had the square footage on it.
Then add the addition.
Yeah, add the addition. The town has twenty-four forty-five, so that's correct. So if you take twenty-four forty-five, add eight hundred, and then multiply it by thirty-five percent, it could be, um, thirty-five percent is like over eleven hundred square feet. So the thirty-five percent is insignificant. It's the eight hundred that we need to focus on.
Yep, and we'll, we'll make that work. That's not an issue.
Okay, great.
And then one of us, well, uh, maybe I, I'll go sit with the building inspector at some point and chat with them and, um, and see what's going on. I understand that stairway thing, so that makes complete sense. This is a whole different situation than a stairway in, the one from like a first to a second floor and a regular, that's different.
Yes.
Um, so, but I still wanna talk to him, just to make sure this, this shouldn't happen to us and.
Yeah. Okay. But I think, Mr. Catigan and Board, I, I think I've done my due diligence to try to get everything that you needed to move forward.
No, you're, you're in better shape than most people. The only hangup is this eight hundred square foot thing. But, uh, in terms of the Board of Health, nobody's ever done that, showed a septic permit, and, uh, it's, uh, it's great.
You know, I just wanted to try to keep moving before we get too terribly bad into the bad weather.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can relate to that. All right, so, uh, as far as, um, findings of fact, the board has found that we don't really have a, 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 uh, precise measurement of the, uh, accessory apartment with regard to the eight hundred square foot maximum. Is that right? Anybody, uh, have anything else?
Yeah, how do we, how do we word that? I mean, the design. Here's the problem when we go to, um, give permits with information not done yet, or things that have to be modified, is it's going to put you in a position, like that permit's gonna be good for what we say. So, um, that's a lot of times we go, do you wanna continue this and talk to your engineer first, but, um, I, could we say something like, according to the plan submitted, which will be modified to be no more than eight hundred square feet excluding that garage stairway? A modification by the engineer?
Yeah.
I wish David was here.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. I mean, we could say, uh, uh, you know, we're gonna issue a permit subject to receipt of a plan confirming the, uh, eight hundred square foot maximum area of the, uh, accessory apartment.
That the building inspector will be in, I give it to him, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that he gets it, right?
You're gonna submit it to Beth, Beth as well, I mean, right?
We, we need a copy too, just to, we have to close, we just have to close the loop, Joe, that's, that's.
Yeah, no, that's okay, but I'd like to at least, hopefully, get a vote that we can at least move forward, and, you know, I'll just make sure if it's eight oh eight, I gotta lose eight feet. I'll just be very specific with my architect, and look, we have to exclude the stairway coming from the garage. We have to be at eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, okay. So the, uh, adequate provision has been made for ingress and egress to the outside from such accessory apartment. And we have basically the building inspector's, um, confirmation of that fact.
And it's also on the plan too.
You know. The lot is, uh, is a lot greater than three quarters of an acre, so it's, uh, it's fine there. Um, adequate provisions had been made for off-street parking of motor vehicles in such a fashion as consistent, um, with the character of a single-family residence. So you've, uh, how many, how many car spaces have you got? I mean.
Well, we're gonna have a driveway in front of that building that's gonna get into the existing driveway, so there'll be plenty of parking.
Okay.
So it'll be none on the street.
Great. And there's no other apartment on the lot?
No.
Except for the squirrels and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're evicting now.
All right, um, and we have the, uh, written report of the Board of Health. I don't see anything else. Does anybody else have anything to contribute on these findings of fact?
Just running through it. I don't see anything else there either. Nope. Should we go through one forty-five sixty? Oh, we've got the Aqua for Protection Overlay District. Do we have to do anything with that?
Yeah, I was just looking through it, and it looks like you need it for earth removal operations.
Yeah, no, we don't.
No, it doesn't affect the residents.
Storage and use of toxic or hazardous materials.
Yeah.
All right.
Small engine repair, that's all.
All right, so we've got the, um, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use, it, um, the site size, the lot size fits the requirement, it's a residential use.
That exceeds the, the minimum, uh, lot size for this application, um.
And then suitability of the site for the proposed use, it's.
Residential use on a residential site, so there's no impact there.
Impact on traffic flow and safety, shouldn't be any.
It isn't great.
I don't think anybody will notice. It's not Madison Avenue in New York.
On neighborhood.
Would you love to do a permit out, down there?
Oh, jeez.
Impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas.
Uh, you really can't even see the house as it is now from the road unless you're looking for it.
Okay, that sounds like a negligible impact.
Um, adequacy of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, that was taken. They've done the Board of Health stuff, septic stuff. There shouldn't be anything with drainage, source of water and drainage.
Well, so, since conservation has some jurisdiction here, they'll probably take care of the, any drainage issues.
Adequacy of utilities and other public services is really not an issue.
Don't see any impact there.
Yeah, impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations.
Well, the lot coverage is, is very small, so I don't, I don't see how, uh, another eight hundred square feet is gonna be a significant, you know, contribution to the impervious space.
All right, with that then, I move that the uh, proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town and view of the particular characteristics of the site. Is there a second?
Okay.
Uh, polling the members, uh, Dave?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
And Albo, yes, motion carries. All right, is there a, a motion for the, uh, well, there is a finding, we're supposed to make a finding that the, um, construction and occupancy of the accessory apartment will not be detrimental to the neighborhood in which the lot is located. So I don't know, that sort of meshes with the special permit criteria, but maybe we should make this.
Yeah, we're, is that under the thirty, under the thirty, one forty-five, thirty-six?
It's, it's under the accessory bylaw, it's, uh, uh, item D.
Yeah. Okay, thirty-six.
Yep.
Okay, so it'll be more than one, did you say B?
D, D is a dog.
Thank you. I'm scrolling, scrolling. Oh, here we go. Apprehension, attention, submit to. No, D is the Board of Health thing.
Are you, is it one, one forty-five dash thirty-six?
Yeah, D, in order to ensure compliance with subsection C one A above, the opportunity shall obtain and submit to the Board of Health, Board of Appeals prior to the hearing of a written report of the Board of Health.
We've got that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's A in, um, what, C part A, I'm talking about, um. I'm talking about, what is it? Two, section two requirements for an accessory apartment, and it goes through...
Oh, the small d, okay, 2D. There's a capital D.
Yep.
The little d. The construction of the accessory apartment will not be detrimental to the neighborhood in which it's located. We covered that in our, that's already covered in our, our...
Well, I, I just, I just want to make sure we cross all the i's because it looks like it's asking us to make a finding under the accessory apartment bylaw that we've already made under the special permit bylaw.
Can we, can we add a sentence under the findings of fact for that, under the criteria, and saying that it satisfies
Yeah, we could do that.
Well, I like that. Let's do that. And maybe we need an outline for this, since they changed this. This has gotten a little bit more convoluted than it used to be.
Yes, it's horrible. I, I agree.
Yeah, I don't like it. So I almost think we need, like Beth has like a little checklist for us. Maybe we can have it organized, so we just go boom, 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 and cover it all. This is, we're all over the place. It's horrible. And we expect the public to understand this?
All right, do you want to make a motion about that and modifying the findings of fact?
I'm going to try. Um, all right, hang on, I don't have the legal notice. Let me use this. All right, I move to grant a special permit for the application of Joe Schenk to construct an accessory apartment over an attached garage at 5 Madison Ave. I'm going to say to be built according to the plan submitted, but I can't.
Well, subject to the submission of a plan confirming the area of the accessory apartment.
To, which will show it to be 800 square feet or less.
Right.
Vicky, did that sound good to you?
Yes.
All right, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, polling the members. Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Vicky?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Bill Catigan votes yes as well, so the motion carries.
All right, so I just want to be clear. I am going to talk with my architect in the morning. I'm going to have him draw a set of plans. I will get a copy up to Beth, and I'll get a copy down to the building inspector to move forward. Yeah. We good?
Yeah, we're good. Now, Joe, just so you know, we have 14 days to file this decision. And you'll get a copy in the mail showing the town clerk's stamp for the date of filing. And Beth doesn't always need 14 days to get this stuff done, but you know.
Now, Beth has been very helpful, and I appreciate everything she did to make sure that you got everything that you all needed in your...
No, no, she does, she does a great job. So anyway, once the, once you get the date of filing, there's a 20-day appeal period during which any of the angry people who showed up to this hearing can appeal. So what, what you do at the end of the 20 days is you get a letter from the town clerk, and she will certify that no appeals have been filed, because if they don't file it with the town clerk, it didn't get filed, so. And then you also have to record this decision at the registry.
Yep.
And, and you take your letter from the town clerk plus your evidence of recording to the building inspector, and he should issue your building permit forthwith. Okay?
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate your time.
Um, can I, Chairman Catigan, a couple of things. I just wondered if the board wanted to add the sunset clause to this decision, similar to the last special permit where upon transfer, the permit expires, or how did you want to do this?
Well, it used to be built into the, it used to be built into it. It's not anymore?
Um, we may have dropped that in the new, in the amended version. I don't see it in there.
Yeah, so I think that's probably why it wasn't on the decision.
Yeah, okay, I think, you know, you should put that, that spoiler plate sunset clause. So on transfer of the property, it means the new owner has to reapply.
Okay.
But we don't, we used to have a five-year limit on this, and it was, you know, it was just ridiculous because nobody ever came back, and we had to go chase people, and it was, it was a lot of work, so, so...
Or a new owner would have to go through the process to, to validate a special permit.
Right.
And while we're at it, there's one more thing. I move to have Chairman Catigan be the signer for the permit.
Thank you.
We almost forgot.
Did somebody second that?
Second, second.
Polling the members. Dave?
Yes.
Oh, good. Vicky?
Yes.
Darlene?
Big yes.
Bill Catigan votes yes too, so, okay, that means I can sign the permit. Great.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, Joe.
Yeah, your nice slide.
Okay, what else do we have, Beth?
Okay, one second. I just want to make sure I got everybody there. Besides Erin Williams, it was Joe Schenk, right? Anyone else? I, I don't know if I...
I don't know, there was somebody there for a while, but...
John Page was on for a bit.
John Page, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, so there are a couple, if you go into your folders under preliminaries, there are two sets of draft minutes.
Okay.
So you can...
Has David gone through those?
Yes.
Okay.
He sent, he sent me his...
Well, you only need three people to, but one of them I wasn't present for, so typically you don't vote on them if they're not present.
Okay.
And that was the 921? The big minutes.
921 and 1019. 921, that was a long one, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and, and we've got that all cleared up. So is there a motion to approve the 921 minutes?
I move that we approve the September 21, 2022 minutes.
Is there a second?
I can't vote.
So, Dave? You're on mute. I don't know, we did, we lose you?
Oh, he has it, okay. Let me see, he...
I think you can second the motion, Darlene. You, you, maybe you can't vote on it, but...
Okay, second.
All right, all right, polling the members. Vicky?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Uh, and I'll vote, Bill Catigan votes yes as well, so that's enough to approve. Three votes is enough to approve the minutes. Okay, so then the 1019 minutes? Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll move to approve them.
Second.
Okay, polling the members. Vicky?
Yes.
Dave? Dave is muted. I can't even...
Yes, hi, I'm trying to do two things at once here, but yes.
Multitasking again, huh? They've proven conclusively that that never works. Darlene, are you going to approve these minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll, I'll vote yes as well, so those most, those minutes are approved too.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the minutes. What else?
Uh, well, it's sort of seven o'clock.
Correspondence, you want to go through some of that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll jump on that.
I don't care about license renewals. This is alcohol licenses?
Yeah, so that, that came in. Common victor and alcohol retail, so I just need to go through the, you know, the, any special permits, and I'll do that in the office. I just wanted you to see that, let you know I'm working on it. So the decision is there from 161 Brookline Road that the ZBA issued. It's been transmitted to boards and committees. The letter received from the special permit holder, Gary Shepherd, regarding three-wheeler road earth excavation special permit. So we received a letter, and what I did is you'll see, if you click on the, I don't know how to describe it, the, the the document that has the permit. What I did was I referenced the letter at the bottom, at the top of the permit, and I put it as an attachment. So when the permit comes up for renewal next year, we'll have a record of that. So we'll know, it's now under the ownership of Gary Shepherd. It's, so, that's how I handled that. Okay, great. And then just a memo came out today, basically indicating special town meeting warrant will be opened and closed on November 15. Warrant articles will be accepted until 4:00 PM on November 11. And special town meeting is on December 13, which is a Tuesday at 7:00 PM in Memorial Hall.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so that's it. And then for the work session, we can push that hazard mitigation plan out. I've just wanted to update the board that I've been going to board and committee meetings, talking about the plan, and trying to, and the CBA doesn't have any implementation responsibilities, but it's just going to briefly... Right, and the planning board referral, I don't know if you want to go through that tonight, but they've proposed additional revisions to 145-54.1, and I put the red line version in your draft. These revisions were made by town council after the public hearing. And the one that I would draw your attention to is they changed the maximum, I'm sorry, the minimum lot size for, for applicability for this development. It's been changed from two down to one acres, which prompted a reposting of the public hearing since it was closed.
Right.
So this will now be reopened and held virtually on November 16 at 6:45, and that. So you can, you can, if you want to do the referral notice, that's fine. If not, I just wanted to mention that the...
Where is it now? I'm looking at those, we got, is it under preliminaries or, or is it...
It's under a work session, yeah.
Oh, work session, okay.
Yeah, and it should say planning board referral, and that, and real...
I gotta, I'll have to read the, the thing and, and...
Yeah.
You know, I'll just go to the public hearing again, so...
Okay, and then the other thing that the planning board's been working on is some minor edits to the site plan review special permit, section 145-42. It is a zoning bylaw, but most of them are clerical in nature. I think they added a few words, scenic roads, that sort of thing. And they, they reworked the applicability section for stormwater management permit application requirements. Fairly minor in nature. Town council's reviewed it and feels that it's fine to go up for this special town meeting. So those are the two that probably going to be brought forward for, for this special.
Did council, town council say anything about his arbitrary and capricious clause?
Back to the age restricted. What he did there is he provided some more wording in that section, and he said, yeah, he just provided an additional section. Yeah, that, that wording is in other areas in the bylaw, and he did note that during our conversation after the public hearing. He said that is not unusual verbiage to be found in the towns and zoning bylaw, so in terms of waivers.
I, I had never seen it before, and I've been around the towns and zoning bylaw for a long time, so I'm curious.
Yeah.
It's in the subdivision control law, the waivers, but we, we've never had waivers in, in the bylaw, in the zoning bylaw that I know of.
Yeah, did you get to read it, or do you want me to read it to you? It's very short.
I'll read it, but I don't want to do it. I don't want to take everybody's time up.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's all for other things. Thank you.
Can, can I just say words about tonight's hearing? Especially, Beth, maybe you can help prevent this in the future by really need to see some sort of a footprint and dimensions of an existing structure. I can't deal with, I believe it to be this or whatever. It can't be hearsay. It needs to be submitted as part of the plans, and most people do that. They say, okay, here's my house, and here's where I'm putting the addition, because the bylaw before used to show kind of how it was attached and how you were getting to it and all that good stuff. And we could have, we could have prevented a lot of that discussion if we understood that that stairway was actually coming from a garage. It wasn't part of the actual house, per se, or the apartment. And the way the applicant described it by just saying stairways aren't included in living area made me think, well, the stairway in his existing home, any other stairway, nothing was included in any of the calculations everywhere, so that the existing house would be inaccurate. Everything would be inaccurate. So it was only this particular stairway coming from the garage, which wasn't really made clear. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Erin Catigan, I am going to have to sign off, so if you have any other comments.
No, that's good. We're good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Thank you.
Second.
Polling the members. Vicky?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Bill Catigan votes yes as well, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.